Good evening. Call to order this January 21st meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city secretary to call the roll, please.
President.
Here.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
President.
Thank you very much. And would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And would you please join the city council and me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant John Morris. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. We move forward with our honorariums and reports. Item H1, please.
Item H1, resolution honoring the 2020 Outstanding Women Leaders January recipients. Whereas according to the National Women's History Project, it is important to share the stories of individual women who have successfully challenged the role of women in both business and the paid labor force. Women have always worked, but often their work has been undervalued and unpaid. It is important to honor trailblazing women who persisted nevertheless. And whereas Mayor Pro tempore Vivian H Burke and the city of Winston-Salem were acknowledged as strength and effectiveness of women leaders in Winston-Salem at a recognition program on March 19th, 2020, which marks the 17th Annual Outstanding Women Leaders Program. And whereas the Outstanding Women Leaders Program has previously recognized 154 chief executive officers, doctors, attorneys, and women of numerous professions as an effort to shine a light on the significant contributions made by women leaders in the community. And whereas two of this year's honorees who exemplify leadership characteristics are Suzanne Danhauer, Associate Professor and Clinical Health Psychologist in the Social Science and Health Policy Department at Wake Forest Baptist Health, and Talitha Vickers, Main Anchor at WXII 12 News. And whereas the hard work and accomplishments of all women are valued and appreciated by the mayor, Mayor Pro tempore Vivian H Burke, and Winston-Salem City Council, and the citizens of Winston-Salem. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the Winston-Salem City Council approve honoring the aforementioned 2020 Outstanding Women Leaders and wish them much success as they continue their efforts in leading the next generation of women leaders.
Sir, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. I'll vote in motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, note that is unanimous. And congratulations to the winners tonight and the selection tonight. Going to ask Councilmember Denise Adams and Councilmember Net Cipio to make the presentations, please.
First of all, on behalf of the Mayor Pro Tempore, Dr. Vivian H Burke, and the city council and the mayor, we want to continue and thank you for all the things that you do here in the community. And we also want to remember to thank again Councilmember Burke, who created this endeavor and for being willing enough to understand how important it is to recognize women for our accomplishments and the things that we do in our communities. So with that said, congratulations. I'm supposed to represent yours.
Thank you. And I'm going to do Ms. Vickers. It is great pride that I present this to you. You do exemplify the legacy that was established years ago when we had our first female African-American anchor Jane Harrington, who was a native of Winston-Salem. And you just epitomize that, and we thank you for continuing that legacy. Because when I grew up, we didn't even expect to see African-American men nor women on TV. So we have moved forward greatly, and we appreciate all that you have done. Thank you so much.
Would you like to make a comment? No, you're not used to mics, so please.
I am bashful, although at my heart I fully am. And thank you so much. And I wish I could just give a apology and say thank you so much to all of you, so many faces I don't get to normally see, and it's usually just the camera looking back at me. So my heart goes a little hit or pat when I see so many faces that I finally get to meet. And it's so, out of all the cities that I've lived in, from New York to Maryland to Charlotte or Orlando, this has been the most welcoming city. And this has been a city where I feel like any idea or dream that you have can come true because of the fact that we have such a great foundation here and so many wonderful people to help uplift some of the ideas that you might have, one of which I was sharing with somebody today. I want to be able to throw little birthday parties for children living in homeless shelters right here in our city. So, at the end of the day, you know, just an idea like that can catch on like wildfire and be able to help other people. And to all the little ones here, you know, I was in your position too one day where I would look up and see someone on TV that maybe looked like me or maybe didn't look like me, but just work hard and keep doing what you're doing and just lift each other up. And I couldn't do this by myself. So I thank you all for helping to support all of us.
Hi, that's a tough act to put on. So I'm really honored to receive this award. I work in the med school, and one of my favorite things that I get to do is work with our women faculty and women leaders and the whole developed women in human leadership roles. And as a mom of all boys, four of them, it's really exciting for me to receive this award and to represent.
Thank you. Congratulations again. Item H2, please.
Item H2, resolution honoring 2020 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Young Dreamers Award recipients, Dwayne Little and Nicole Little. Whereas the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Young Dreamers Award was established by the Winston-Salem Human Relations Commission in 2009. And whereas the purpose of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Young Dreamers Award is to recognize two outstanding emerging or proven young adults, leaders who reside in the city of Winston-Salem and have produced a meaningful result in community inclusiveness and race relations. And whereas the goal of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Young Dreamers Award is to encourage young adults to participate in philanthropic altruistic community involvement reflecting the spirit in which Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. lived and encouraged others to live. And whereas the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Young Dreamers must be 18 to 40 years of age on or before January 15th, 2020. And whereas the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Young Dreamers are residents of Winston-Salem who have demonstrated outstanding work and dedication in the Winston-Salem community and can neither hold an executive leadership position within his or her organization nor be an elected government official. And whereas the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Young Dreamers have made a tangible difference in the lives of others who may have otherwise been overlooked, ignored, or disadvantaged. Specific examples include fostering positive race relations, vocalizing or acting against an injustice, leading inclusiveness among all individuals, and embracing those who are perceived as being different and celebrating religious diversity. The Young Dreamers civic and/or community-oriented work has resulted in tangible results benefiting disenfranchised persons in the community. Now therefore be it resolved that Dwayne Little and Nicole Little are recognized and honored for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Young Dreamers Award for 2020 dated this 21st day of January.
Sir, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those who vote in motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone who oppose, vote no. No, that's unanimous. So I think I wonder, Alan Abrahai is going to make the presentation. Abrahai.
Good evening, Mayor Joines, members of the city council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am very honored to be before you this evening to recognize the 2020 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Young Dreamers. These two individuals are very special to our community in that, yes, they are between the ages of 18 and 40, which is an age group that sometimes gets overlooked when we are giving out accolades and awards, but they truly do exemplify what is good and what is true in our community when it comes to community service and compassion. These two actually floated to the top of all of the nominations that were received by the Human Relations Commission. We had quite a few nominations this year, but they stood out. They really did. They're the cream of the crop, and we're happy to have them here. What I would like to do first is recognize my staff who is here tonight for their hard work in helping to put the word out about the nominations, and also the Human Relations Commission, three of whom are represented here tonight with us. Human Relations Commission, would you please stand? And my staff, would you please stand as well? And so without further ado, I would like to call to the podium Commissioner Carrie Wiggins, Commissioner Sylvia Durant, and Commissioner Fred Taylor. They are going to read the biographies of each awardee tonight.
Excuse me. Would you go please use the mic and face this way? Thank you.
Sergeant Dwayne Little. Sergeant Dwayne Little has a heart for bettering the community. He exemplifies compassion for the community, not only through his professional work life, but through his personal community service as well. Sergeant Little coordinated the inaugural Never Walk Alone Community event on June 1st, 2019. The event focuses on hope, recovery, education, and resources for citizens addicted to opioids, alcohol, et cetera. Less than a year, Sergeant Little has renewed the vision of the Crime Prevention Unit at the Sheriff's Department. He has developed and implemented several programs that provided awareness to the community regarding law enforcement. In addition to his duties at the Forsyth County Sheriff's Department, he volunteers at WR Anderson Recreation Center as a basketball coach. Sergeant Little also volunteers his fraternity, Omega Psi Phi fraternity, which is a public service fraternal organization. Congratulations, Sergeant Little.
Thank you. Again, shocked and humble. It's a wonderful honor. Thank you to the mayor and the city council, Human Relations Department, City of Winston-Salem. I get trouble. I want to get in trouble. This is what I'm supposed to do. Thank my wife. My wife, my wife Katina, she my greatest supporter, my motivator. She, a lot of time my scheduler. She keeps me straight, keeps me going. My three sons, Marcellus, Nehemiah, and Maximus, those two guys are just my heartbeat. I want to thank my mother for her, her training me and having me to be a community person at an early age. This, this, this award is not by my doing alone. I have a great coach, Sheriff Kimbrough, who helps, who helps motivate this team. Our team reflects his leadership, his drive to be in more places in the community, in the city and the county, has really motivated the whole Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. I'd like to thank the command staff, and one of those are here, Captain Pete Shutt. I love that man. He is a, he's a big brother to me. And I'm just, I'm humbled by this honor. And again, many thanks. Can't talk about next recipient because I don't want to ruin her shit. She is awesome, and I'm thankful for her as well.
Can you, can you have your family to stand up, please?
Thank you. Congratulations. Congrats.
Mayor Joines, members of council, I'd also like to thank Dr. Pam Peoples-Joyner for submitting the nomination for Sergeant Little.
Good evening, Mayor Joines, city council members, and all of our guests here this evening. I am pleased to recognize Nicole Little. So Nicole Little is a native daughter of Winston-Salem, where she cultivated her passion for community building through civic engagement at the early age of 12 as a participant in the Winston-Salem Youth Arts Institute, now known as Authoring Action. After graduating from Wake Forest University in 2013, where she obtained her Bachelor's of Arts in Sociology with a concentration in crime and criminal justice. After this, she delved headfirst into advocacy, assisting residents of Cleveland Avenue Homes, Townview Apartments, and Piedmont Circle to obtain scholarships and grants as the Ross Lead Coordinator with the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem. During this time, she also continued volunteering with the Daryl Hunt Project of Freedom and Justice and acted as a consultant with the Advancement Project of DC by organizing and educating impacted voters across the state on changes to voting rights law in North Carolina. Then in May of 2017, she graduated magna cum laude from North Carolina Central University School of Law. Her legal practice focuses primarily in the area of criminal defense and post-conviction relief, including expungements and certificates of relief. She has dedicated her life's work to helping those who are underprivileged and underrepresented. So congratulations, Ms. Little.
Hello, Mayor Joines, city council. I just want to thank you all for this day. Thank you all for being here, for the work that you've done for our city. Furthermore, I would like to thank again the Human Relations Commission as well as those who thought enough of me to nominate me. I had the opportunity yesterday to really kind of manifest and to really just sit back and think about what this means in terms of the responsibility that's on my shoulders, the responsibility to continue to serve this community in the way that I've always loved to do, but the stakes are higher now. For me, being a native daughter, hometown girl here in Winston-Salem, I grew up on the north side, northeast Winston-Salem, you know, got to throw a little representation in there. But I grew up right down the street from where Larry Little lives, former alderman on this board. I had those examples in my community of folk that were using their tools and their assets to create a change, to implement change and advocate for those that were underrepresented and marginalized in our community. For me, service, that's not something I look for to get in a trophy. It's not something that we do to be recognized. Instead, it is something that I do in order to come back and to see people progress here in the city and the communities that I came from. I remember very vividly when I helped to rally folks over in East Winston after the George Zimmerman verdict was come down, and we talked about racial profiling and really the policing of black bodies. And those discussions were at a peak in 2013. But I remember vividly somebody asking me, what does this mean for you now? Now that everybody's talking about this, do you want to become a lawyer? And at that time, I was so young and naive, I told them, no, I don't want to be part of the system that potentially imprisoned Daryl Hunt and kept him there wrongfully for over 19 years of his life. I don't want to be part of that system. But Daryl pulled me to the side, him and Dr. Rabel both, and said, listen, you have a story to tell. We need more people in this system working against it that have colorful stories like you, Nicole. Do not internalize the pains that we have gone through and that what we've seen and say that's a reason not to be involved. You need to be in it in order to make a change. And that, those two conversations that I had with Dr. Rabel and Daryl Hunt changed my life forever. From there, I went on to law school. When I got to Durham, everybody said, what's next for you? You going to DC? Everybody had big higher hopes for me, but what I told them was I was going back home. I'm going back home. I went up there to get a tool, a toolset and a skillset to help those back in my city, and that is why I'm here. So again, I thank you all for recognizing me, but quite frankly, this is what I've been called to do. And this is where my heart is, and I thank you all for leading the way. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Taylor.
And while you're taking your photo ops to Ms. Little and Mr. Little, I just want to thank you for your service to our community. I won't talk too long. I don't want to be late with an hour. But I certainly love when people want to move into our community and contribute and make a difference. That means something to me. What means more to me is that people who are from this community, you stayed, you decided to make a difference, you decided to fight and not move, I thank you for your commitment and for your service. As a native son of the South Side, we thank you for your commitment to this city. And we've got a running joke. Anybody who's from a different place in the city, we always rep our side of the town. And you see, they weren't very happy with me being from the South Side, but it's a sense of love and pride, and we just really appreciate you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations. Thank you, Alan. Maybe have Adam, H3, please.
Item H3, presentation by the Piedmont, the Piedmont Airport Authority.
Tonight, actually, Councilmember Burke had asked me some time ago about a report on the status of the Piedmont Triad International Airport. And there's so many great things going on over there. I've asked the executive director of the authority, Kevin Baker, to be with us tonight, and Kevin's going to give us a quick update on the goings on at the Piedmont Triad International Airport. Kevin? If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin Baker, 1008 Ted Johnson Parkway, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27409. And can you get me back to the... I'm going to talk a little bit about the airport for sure tonight and just give you guys a bit of an update as to where things are and where we're headed and some of the opportunities that are coming along. But also, it's more than just PTI. It's really a regional aerospace initiative that is going on, and I think that you'll see a lot of that in some of these slides. I've got a real brief video. It's about a three-minute video that's sort of a sales piece for the region and for the airport. I'd like to start off with that, and then after that, I've just got a few slides. I'm not going to take a lot of your time, but I want to save some time for questions if you all have any to ask. So let me, with that, start this, hopefully.
Welcome to Piedmont Triad International Airport, the heart and soul of an aerospace industry boom that's taking place in central North Carolina. The airport's located along the Interstate 40 corridor in the Piedmont Triad of North Carolina, which has become a job-rich region of aircraft manufacturing, aircraft part supply, and aviation repair and maintenance. Companies such as Honda Aircraft Company and HECO Americas have located their international headquarters at the airport. FedEx has a major mid-Atlantic hub at the airport, and Cessna's thriving airport repair facility serves the entire mid-Atlantic seaboard. Nearby, Collins, Honda Aero, and Triumph Aerospace are pushing the envelope of innovation and providing thousands of jobs to aviation workers across the region. In all, nearly 200 aerospace companies call the Piedmont Triad home, and with good reason. With its central east coast location, moderate climate, a robust cultural life, abundant recreation, good schools, and some of the country's best medical facilities, and more than a dozen colleges and universities, the Piedmont Triad is frequently rated among the best places in the country to live and to do business. With a regional population of more than 1.6 million residents and a global workforce of 800,000, the Piedmont Triad has attracted companies from around the world. The pro-business environment includes incentive programs at the state and local levels, and a candid attitude among local leaders. An aggressive community college system emphasizes careers in all facets of aerospace and custom trains workers. The airport is located at the center of the Piedmont Triad, which includes the North Carolina cities of Greensboro, High Point, and Winston-Salem. This puts the airport in the center of North Carolina, in the center of the east coast, and within easy reach of more than two-thirds of the country's population and business centers. Up to more than 50 companies and nearly 6,000 employees, the airport infuses an estimated $6 billion into the local economy each year. A system of interstate highways adorning the airport makes surface transportation to and from the airport a breeze. The airport has rail access and is less than 200 miles inland from three deep water ports. The modern passenger terminal has service of 60 flights a day to 15 direct destinations that connect the airports all over the world. The 9,000 and 10,000-foot parallel runways and a cross-wind runway provide ample capacity for current traffic and future tenants. Low taxi times and a modern nav aid system keep air traffic moving. Adjacent to the airport, there are more than 1,000 acres of land connected to the airport by a new taxiway and are ready for development by one tenant or by multiple tenants. Infrastructure is in place, and the airport has already received preliminary approval for development of these sites. PTI is enjoying a golden age of expansion and renovation. Over the past 10 years, airport expansion has attracted nearly $1 billion in private investment, which has created thousands of new jobs. A realistic master plan and commitment to economic development by state and local leaders has positioned the airport for even more rapid growth. Piedmont Triad International Airport is at the center of the next generation of aerospace. We invite you to be a part of it.
All right. So just a few slides to give you a little bit of history, a little bit of organization. Talk about the finances of the airport, the mission of the airport, and then just some specifics on the passenger experience. And most importantly of all is the economic development impact of the airport and really what it's doing for this side of the, of the triad. First of all, just organization. I think all of you know this, but the, the members of our authority are appointed by the three city councils, including you all, High Point and Greensboro, and then the two counties, Forsyth County Commissioners and Guilford County Commissioners. I won't go through all the members here, but certainly Graham Bennett, Forsyth County appointee, and Mayor Joines, who comes to us from you all. And I will say that the mayor has been a very active member. He has, he's added an awful lot to our board, and I thank you, and our whole board would thank you for appointing the mayor. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time that you put into it. So the authority was established in 1941, so we're talking about, just about 80 years old at this point. The airport, this is one of the most important slides that I'll present. The airport is completely financially independent. There are no tax dollars that go towards any part of the operation of this airport. Our revenues are, we're sort of a small business is the way to look at it. And our board, excuse me, our board is effectively the board of directors for a small business. The revenue from, for the airport comes from the airlines, the tenants that we have on, on the airport, and then the customers that are coming through the airport. You can see some of our financial data right there. It's about a $40 million operation with expenses of 20 or so, and then debt service of around six. So if you add the bottom two together and subtract it from the first number, you see that we're throwing off about $13 million a year. That all gets plowed right back into the operation of the airport as for improvements in the terminal and things like that. in the terminal and things like that going forward. So we have somewhat of a unique mission. So most of the time when you think about an airport, you think about a place of transportation. It's a place where people and packages get moved around the world to other places, and we have that. And we want to make sure that going forward, we continue to provide an excellent passenger experience for anybody who's going to fly out of our airport. However, we have the unique component of a significant economic development move underway in the aerospace industry, and I'm going to show you a few of those. But most important, let me underscore this, there are 1,200 people right now who work at the airport and live in Forsyth County. 1,200 of those, just about half, also live in the city limits of Winston-Salem. So when your economic development teams come to you and you have a pursuit perhaps for a new company that may be coming into town, and you're having to look at incentives and all those kinds of things, imagine, you know, the interest that the, that the city would have in a 600-person employer. That's what you have in this airport right now. So just a quick scorecard for the year. Last year was just an absolutely tremendous year for the airport. Our passengers were up nearly 15%. This is the end of the calendar year numbers, we just got them in, this is all hot off the press. You can see that we have 1,078,000 employment, so we're the first time that we've gone back over a million employments. And that, that by the way, means one person getting on an airplane, that's an employment. Double the number if you want to see the total number of people that are coming through it, because there's those that are getting off of the planes as well. So, but it's the first time that we've been through a million passengers since 2008. So this is a really huge milestone for us to get back through, we're excited about it. Cargo also is up 35% year-to-date, that's largely on the news that you probably saw about a year ago with FedEx expanding their operations at the airport. But we're talking about hundreds of new jobs that were created during the air. Again, best year in quite some time. Just a little plug, our marketing folks, the mayor will laugh at this, but our marketing folks wanted to make sure that I got in a little marketing for Nashville. If you didn't hear, we've just announced service from Allegiant, from here to Nashville. It'll start in the summer, and we would love for you to get on a plane and head to Nashville. It's so important for us to be able to support these flights, because if they're successful, they'll come back, they'll grow, they'll expand. If they're not successful, they'll shut it down. So your support will be terrific, and tell everyone you know about it, please. So I talked about these two parts of the mission, passenger experience and the other being the economic development piece. Let's talk about the passenger experiences for a second. So, you know, again, we want this to be the best airport that anybody can fly out of. We want you to really have a great experience while you're in this airport. If you think about that experience, we can only control part of the continuum of that. We don't control the number of flights, the fares that you're going to pay, how frequent those flights are flying, where they're flying to, we can't control any of those things. What we can control, though, is your experience when you're on the airport. Do the parking lots, is the pavement nice in the parking lot? Can you see where you're going? Do the signs make sense? When you get into the building, is it a comfortable place to sit? Can you find food that is enjoyable? All of those kinds of things. And those are the things that we're trying to affect and, and to make sure that we improve them to serve all of our customers. And for the last five or six years, we've been going through a pretty significant renewal process for the terminal. We don't have the money to knock the whole thing down and start over from scratch, so it's a renewal, not a redo. But, and I won't go through all of these things, any of you who travel a lot will have noticed a lot of these things over the last four, five, six years that we've been doing to improve the terminal. But I do want to stop on the last bullet point, because that's our next step, and it's going to be significant. We're going to remodel completely, at least remodel completely, the two concourses that you come in on, and we're looking for the concourse of the future here. We're looking for something that will be, something that'll last for the next 40 years. In today's world of air travel, the customer wants to get through security and know that they're past that blockade, right? And you're safe, you can see your airplane, whatever it is. And that's where we're headed to make sure that that place that you enjoy, that you feel comfortable hanging out in that spot, and it's a nice, comfortable spot, think about it feeling like an airline club as opposed to a bus station. So that's, that's kind of where we're headed with the concourses. I wanted to show you a couple of examples. So this is sort of like when you go to the eye doctor and he says, is it better at one or two? One or two, right? So this is the ticket counter, one of the ticket counters in about 2014, just to show you now what the same area looks like, there it is today. So better at one or two? One or two? And so you, you see the difference, this is just completely modernizing these, this, this is the main terminal now in front, remember, the concourses will be next. But, you know, I, I think that our architects, I think that our planners did a tremendous job in turning a 1980s building into something that looks like it was built last year. Also, just a different angle, and you'll notice the lighting, look at the lighting up top. This has actually taken Thanksgiving Day of last year. So you see the lighting is yellow, orange is red, so we can change that for seasonal, seasonal lighting might be Christmas, it might be whatever. Here you see just the standard blue lighting, which is intended to mimic the airfield lighting that you see on taxiways whenever you're coming into the airport. So those are sort of the things that we're, where we're headed with the, the passenger experience. But again, you know, our, our role as an employer cannot be understated, and I want to spend a few minutes on this time, this topic, and again, it is a regional effort, there's no question about it. We are partnered right now with the economic development groups of all three cities, all three major cities in the triad, plus Piedmont Triad Partnership, and I will say that Stan Kelly and the PTP really led this effort, and then of course, the Airport Authority is one of these partners, to implement a regional aerospace strategy. And this is not just regional meaning the airport, it means all of the airports in the 12-county triad area. It means Smith Reynolds Airport, importantly, to all of you, obviously. It means projects that could be located in the middle of the county somewhere, don't, do not have to be on an airport. For instance, you can make airports, airplane tires somewhere and then have them shipped to an airport, right? So projects like that, all of which are huge employers for our community, and it's a replacement industry for so many that have been lost over the years. My next few slides are going to obviously focus on our airport, but just remember that we're all teamed together and we're all supporting each other as we go forward in this effort. So with respect to PTI, a $6 billion economic impact annually, this is not my number, these numbers come from the state of North Carolina. You may have seen, it was in the newspaper back in, I would say, February of this year, they, they had some, an article in there about the impact of Smith Reynolds, which is also very significant, I believe it was 831 million, something like that. So, you know, airports are huge economic impactors. You can see some of the numbers up here. So we have just under 5,900 direct employees, these are not people who are off of the campus, they are coming to work on the airport on a daily basis. If you look, add the indirects, you're talking about getting close to 20,000 people employed as a result of this airport being here. The average salary on the airport is between $60,000 and $65,000. So if you just do the low-side math of that, take 5875 times the 60, you get over $350 million in salaries alone from just the direct employees on the airport. Again, think about how important that is. And remember, of those 5875, 1,200 of them are over here. This makes us, if you go get the Triad Business Journal's Book of Lists every year, where they list the, the top employers, if you took all of the companies on the airport that have that, that total of almost 6,000 employees, we would be the sixth-largest employer in the triad. Significant. The biggest thing that we focus on is being ready to say yes, and that's the phrase that I use. The airport's part in the economic development effort is really to be providing the product. The product in this case is land for companies that need to locate on an airport to have and to be able to use. So we've been executing a plan for now about six or seven years, that is to find, grow, provide access to that kind of land on our airport, make sure that it's got landside access, in other words, roadways, make sure that it's got all the utilities and other things that it needs, and then of course, airfield access. And then getting a flat so that these companies will have a, a graded site ready to go whenever it is that they want to come in. So the image that you're looking at now was taken a few years ago, and it's from the west, sort of over the Colfax area, looking back to the east, towards downtown Greensboro. You see the airport in the background. What I want to show you in the foreground now is 1,000 acres of land that we have ready to be developed. Honda, and the Honda Development is on 130 acres. So imagine another seven or eight Honda Developments right there. FedEx occupies 160 acres. So that's another six or so Fedexes that could be out here. Huge additional employment possible. You can see how our taxiway system would be constructed to provide access to that, I won't go into great details, but anybody who wants to see this, just give me a call, I'll take you out there and show you it. It's really something to behold. If you look at the area that's on your, on your screens right now, and you kind of see a rectangular site altogether, golf course in front, you see roads kind of creating a square or rectangle of land, you could take the entire Central Business District of Charlotte and plop it down in that area. That's how massive that area is. And again, we're stepping through, you can see where parts of it are being graded in this image, and this image is a year old. Right now, that golf course isn't gone, we're grading that golf course this very minute. So we are moving ahead, we've got a board along with Mayor Joins, who is just very, very supportive of the economic growth. We've got a region that is also very supportive, and I think we're just very, very close to hitting big, I think a homerun, maybe a grand slam. So with that, I will ask if anyone has any questions.
Questions, Mr. Baker. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you very much. I do fly a lot out of Greensboro, and I've seen the transformation over the years. Being that I'm a customer, and I watched your bullet points after watching your video, I would ask that you may want to incorporate a more diverse look of the Piedmont in your video that you're showing all over the place. The one that I've noticed the most was A&amp;T, State University, which, as you can see, we're more than that. If you have, and we know you do, employers that look different colors, I would advise you and your board, Mayor, you might want to go relook at that, because I do know a lot of young people that work at the airport, that graduated not just from Forsyth Tech and Winston-Salem State, but A&amp;T as well. And I'd like to see your video mirror what my community looks like. The next thing is, when you going to get the escalators fixed on the down, going down to the baggage area? I don't know how long it's been that, you know, when you got older people and you only got a few elevators at that end, when you're coming out from either United or Delta, you can't just go downstairs anymore, and I don't know how lo, but it's been a long time, am I right?
So, yes, ma'am. The escalators are the bane of my existence. There are six of them, and there's constantly issues with them. What is amazing to me is that just the replacement of one tread, and each escalator has 75 treads, guess how much one tread costs? $1,000 to replace one single tread, and we keep a whole bunch of them on store so that we can replace them when we need to. We actually have-
But is the down one fixed? I'll be flying in a few weeks.
They, they are all working. As is the elevator.
Okay. The other thing that I do want to commend you on is a lot of times my flights, I take early flights, like 5:30 in the morning, and I always want to eat breakfast, Carolina style. And I noticed a few months ago, you got, when I was there, a new breakfast place, I can't think of the name of it, but it's in that side of the terminal, the concourse, where there really was nothing, and I commended the chefs, the managers, a couple of times I've been in there. Food was excellent, and don't get me wrong, airport food is okay, but that's all over the country, but I must say that the breakfast, they had local producers like Nisa Sausage and the people that grind the grits down off Alamance or West Stokes County, and the food, and the eggs and everything, free-range, were local sourced, their foods, and, and I liked that very much. But again, walk away, takeaway. You might want to look at, no, not might, you need to go look at your video again, and look at what I saw, and I'm a communications customer service person, and I began now to count the faces that looked like me, and I didn't see. And I know we worked there, and people are, you know, they're prone to always ask if these jobs are averaging $65,000, the next question might come from someone, well, how many, what's your diversity numbers look like at the airport? So I know I see African-Americans, Latino, Hispanics, and others in the bag handling area, security, and at the desk when you're, the reservations, and when you're getting ready to get on the plane. But I'm sure people would be interested in, that slide should be broken down more than what it is, to a deep-dive detail, Mayor, of who are your engineers, what do we look like? Who are the other people that's, that's working at the airport and what those jobs look like, so that we can help communicate with the, the relationship we are establishing with Forsyth Tech on the new airport training job facilities at our airport, how does this affect my community as to being able to get into those jobs? But again, thank you, and I'd also like to know, what is the diversity of your board looks like? I saw the names, only person I knew on there, I think, was him, I'd like to see that as well, and maybe you can present that to the city manager, and we can take a closer look at it. But thank you again for what you're doing, the golf course, Bel Air, I remember when that was moved or changed so that you could increase the air, the runways, it has been transformational over there. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Mr. Baker, thank you for, for your presentation. I'm going to recognize Councilmember Larson just a moment, but folks may be wondering why this is important to Winston-Salem, and obviously you pointed out the jobs that are already there, but the fact that we've got a very active, functioning airport is critical to us as we're growing our knowledge-based economy here, and air travel is one of those key pieces of it. So when we see a, a new airline operation, going to Nashville, for instance, or when Spirit came in and opened up the Florida market, adding those additional flights, it makes our job easier when we're trying to recruit companies or help companies to stay here and expand, so that's good news there. Councilmember Larson?
I just have one question that I'm asked oftentimes, PTI, Piedmont Triad International Airport, right? Why do we still have GSO on all our, all our luggage?
Because PTI is a code that is actually held by an airport in Australia, believe it or not. And changing those codes is, is quite a task as well. So yes, that, that is the reason.
Glad you think Piedmont is the name.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate you coming over.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Tonight's agenda, the city council is comprised of two parts, the general and agenda and the consent agenda. As always, the practice of our council, to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the city council or being submitted in accordance with established procedure. There'll be no discussion on the items on this agenda unless the councilmember says request, in which event the item will be removed and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. Our meeting is being televised live on TV 13, and will be replayed on Wednesday at 9:30 a.m. And copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at www.cityofws.org, and just click on the watch meetings online option. Councilmembers, are there any items on the consent you wish to pull?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. And that is unanimous, thank you very much. We'll now go to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items. There's a voluntary annexation item, an ordinance amending the project budget ordinance, there's an item regarding funds for a project in the 14th Street New Wauker Town Road area, as well as a public comment period. The voluntary annexation is listed as a public hearing. When this public hearing is called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and the council will consider the item. The public comment period is a time set aside for citizens to voice their opinions on matters that are germane to city government. When the public comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes for public comment as well, and the public comment period is limited to 30 minutes. May we have item G1, please?
Item G1, public hearing on petition for the voluntary annexation of approximately 6.1388 acres located off of Patsy Drive, being part of a future phase of Glen Landing, located in Southeast Ward. Petition of Nancy Wall, Charles, Charles R. Smith, Phyllis S. Dyson, and Betty S. Willard, recommended by Public Works Committee.
This is a public hearing, is anyone in council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed voluntary annexation. See no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and I recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, this is a routine voluntary annexation in the Glen Landing community. What you saw in the PTI video was that infrastructure matters. We've now opened Research Parkway and the Salem Creek Connector, and folks from the southeastern and the south side of the city are able to get to downtown in just minutes. So we're starting to see new housing pop up, and more and more people want to live in our community, and more and more people wanting to be voluntary annexed. So this is just one of those routine situations. With that being said, I move for approval of this item at this time. With that being said, I move for approval of this item at this time.
Motion second to the discussion. All those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you.
Item G2?
Item G2, ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the City of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year 2019-2020, Hope and Hydroponics. Finance Committee forwarded this item with one in favor and none opposed into abstaining.
Did come out of Finance Committee. The chairman abstained, so I asked the vice chairman, the Councilmember Adams, if she'd like to move approval.
Yes, I move for approval. First, can I get a-
Would you like a little update?
Mr. Roll.
Absolutely. Mr. Roll, would you please give us a quick update on this?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor Joins and members of city council. So, this item began back in 2016 with an approval of this council to enter into a twenty-five-year land lease with two organizations, one being Hope, which stands for Help Our People Eat, and the second organization was the Golar Community Development Corporation. Basically, a twenty-five-year lease to construct two buildings, one serving as Hope's headquarters, and a second building, which would be the hydroponics operation, which would be constructed and managed by Golar Community Development Corporation. At this particular time, the Hope building has been completed. The hydroponics facility is under construction. This item authorizes an additional five hundred thousand dollars coming from the 2014 Economic Development Bonds to provide additional funding support to complete the construction of the hydroponics facility.
Any questions, Mr. Roll, and Councilmember Bessie?
Yes. Some of the items that were discussed in committee perhaps have been raised as, why was this not anticipated? Soil remediation, that's normally the kind of thing that you can't know that it's there until you get into digging up the earth. How much was that in terms of total cost?
Councilmember Bessie, that, the soil testing and remediation all total was approximately a hundred thousand dollars. And that's just one of several unanticipated items that came up during the course of construction, and can speak to a couple of those. Another big-ticket item was the need for a new access road that was not originally part of the scope of the project. That was an additional hundred thousand dollars that was unanticipated. There was approximately thirty thousand dollars or so that was associated with, I'll just call them timing issues with the construction on the Hope building, which involved making some repairs to some sidewalk, damaged sidewalk, relocation of fencing on the site. So, there were several sort of unanticipated things that occurred and that, just during the normal course of construction of the project.
And just one other question, and that is, the Hope building, that's Help Our People Eat, that's a nonprofit community organization that delivers meals. That's their headquarters. Is that also a storehouse, a warehouse?
Councilmember Bessie, I am not certain what all is used. I just understand it to be the headquarters for their operation, where they bring the volunteers in to prepare meals, but they may use it for that purpose, but I am not certain.
Better meal preparation.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Mayor's member of council, move for approval of G2.
Second. I would just second. Any discussion? Councilmember Bessie?
Yeah, I was talking with Councilwoman Adams ahead of the meeting, and I was thinking that this is a kind of public educational opportunity on what is anticipated to go on at the hydroponics facility that shouldn't be missed, and wondered if you would be willing to discuss for a bit the kinds of teaching uses that you anticipate the hydroponics facility being used for, and what you see may come out in terms of other similar projects in the community.
Councilmember Adams?
I'm going to also ask if Mr. Suggs would come up as well.
Mr. Suggs?
I know that we've been on this journey for a while, but things take time. And as I was explaining to council and the press and the community, you know, sometimes innovation and new ideas are not popular when you bring them to fruition, or attempt to bring them to fruition. We like to talk about how our food disparity is nation, nationally known here in Winston-Salem, and this was an, is an attempt to help make it better. Part of this was, again, for those who didn't know, I made a journey, because I'm always reading about agriculture, urban farming, and everything else, to Charleston, South Carolina a few years ago. I spent a week down there with twenty-four other people from all over the world, learning about hydroponics and aquaponics, and how important it's going to be for our world as we move forward with environmental issues and climate change and everything else. You won't be able, as we see out west, to determine seasonal growth that you can depend on all the time. I saw this also as an opportunity, as we've seen across the country, where urban cities are now taking it upon themselves to help work in collaboration with other nonprofits and citizens to learn how to grow food in an urban setting, whether it's in a greenhouse, hydroponics, raised gardens, and community gardens, and everything else. What we see is coming out of this is we are going to collaboratively, and I know everybody thinks, well, who are you going to work with? How are you going to get this done? We are still X months away from actually planting the first seeds in the hydroponics facility and doing the fish in the aquaponics. But we're going to have those types of collaborations with not only Hope, the Food Bank, other nonprofits in the area, community groups, urban farmers, and others, reentry, to learn about this process and making sure that they are trained in, I call it, basic laboratory work. In hydroponics, you have to do, and I see Dr. Harrison, our superintendent out there for Forsyth County Schools, you have to learn how to work in a lab setting, and you usually begin at the bottom, like I did, working at the brewery. You got to learn to clean the lab equipment. You got to learn how to use the equipment. You got to be able to understand what pH hydroponic equipments and all of that stuff is. And we're looking for that opportunity, not with the school, just with the school system, but with Forsyth Tech and our reentry and others, to teach others, how do you get in those basement, low-level jobs of the technology and lab world in Winston-Salem. See, we always talk about innovation quarter and the hospitals and all of those, but we never really settle on, how does a person get in at that level for a job to be able to start to understand, hey, I'm doing this now, and maybe I don't have a high school diploma or GED, but now I got an opportunity to go to Forsyth Tech or to move further at Winston-Salem State and other institutions to get there. We're also looking at collaborating with the school system and others, Kimberly Park and Cook in the area, to teach our children about STEM and other aspects of urban farming and agriculture. And Mr. Suggs, you can jump in when you want to. Jump in where you fit in.
You're doing a great job.
Suggs, if you give your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Michael Suggs, 545 North Trace Street. You know, we started talking about this, I guess it was going on four years ago. We boarded a bus, we went down to Raleigh and Durham, and we took some of the city council members. We actually visited NC State. We realized that this was a very innovative type of endeavor that we were taking on. And the reality of it was that when you take it on something that's innovative like this, you don't have all the answers when you begin. I mean, we say we're the city of innovation, and sometimes that means trying things you don't have all the answers to when you start. But what we've been doing, we know that this has to be something that's self-sustainable. So, we actually, we worked with a company that actually did a feasibility study. And the feasibility study, we talked to some of the restaurants, we talked to some of the local grocers, to find out what is it that they would buy from our greenhouse, because we knew that this is something that had to be sustainable. So, we've gone through that process. We've also have been talking to Forsyth County Agriculture Extension, because we hope they're going to be able to partner with us also. And as council members said, there are two schools, Cook and Kimberly, that are in the area. We plan to work very closely with them, because once again, we think that we need to get our kids involved. We're also going to have a community gardening for the people that live in the community. We're working very close with the Kimberly Park Homeowners Association. So, that's the way that we've taken this on. We see the city as being a partner in this, and, you know, something that we're excited about, and we just hope that we got your support.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs.
And one more thing is, if you've, again, for those that who have not driven over in the Kimberly Park, Martin Luther King area, I ask you to go by. It's very big, it's probably something you've never seen before. But it can also be scaled down smaller, once we figure out all of the intricacies of operations and running and working with, pulling in the people, yes, like Michael Banner and some others that have been doing this for a while now, and get some of our folk employed in it, and help them to also, as Michael said, do the raised gardens, community gardens, the urban. Winston-Salem, if you go on the city link, we have done more in urban agriculture than most of our major cities in this state and country, so far as laws and ordinances that allow people to have chickens in the city for protein and eggs and produce. We also allow people to now, the city council, that you can grow food in your front yard on your property, and you can sell it and provide income for your family and you, as well as providing meals. You know, we have an urban food policy council for the city that most cities don't have. And again, this policy council doesn't just meet and, you know, rubber-stamp things. Our foods policy council are activist advocates for urban food in the city itself. And I know, like I said, as Mr. Suggs said, we can scale it down, and we're, again, hoping, Mayor, members of the council, and the city, and the public, that we will be able to duplicate this all over the city and those communities where it's most needed, providing employment, employee training, as well as an educational initiative to go forward with our young people. So.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor to approve this. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And the motion passes five to two. Councilmember McIntosh, Councilmember Clark voting in the negative. Councilmembers, on item G3, the staff assets, we pulled this item from the agenda, it has some additional staff work to do. Without objection, we'll pull that from the agenda. Item G4?
Item G4, public comment period.
As I mentioned, at times, once per month, we invite members of the public to address us on matters that are germane to city government or the community, and we ask that you state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Our first speaker is Angela Harrison, our superintendent of schools, and we are honored to have you with us, superintendent.
Good evening, Mayor Joins and city council members. Thank you for allowing me a moment to speak. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for my allow. And I want to also thank you all for being so welcoming and certainly supporting education on a day-to-day basis. So, now I know it likes to meet the timer. I didn't realize that, okay? So, it's no secret that teacher pay is a concern, and not just Winston-Salem, Forsyth, but across the nation, and certainly in North Carolina. Recruiting and retaining the best teachers and paying them a livable and competitive wage is a struggle nationwide. While we can't resolve the problems nationally, we do have an opportunity to help with teacher pay locally. On March 3rd, voters in Forsyth County, across Forsyth County, will be asked to approve a quarter cent sales tax. That sales tax is expected to generate approximately thirteen million dollars for the first year, and with the potential to increase to fourteen million by 2025. That money, all of that money, will be dedicated to increasing the supplement for classroom teachers. Depending on the economy, we expect teachers to have a supplement, additional supplement of two to three thousand dollars, which places us in the top five across the state, as is crucial recruitment and retention. Currently, our district has the lowest supplement of any major urban district in the state. Fifteen percent of our teachers leave us each year, which is approximately five hundred teachers. Last year, again, that was about five hundred teachers. In many cases, they're leaving right next, to go next door to a higher-paying district. We, right now, have thirty vacancies, and that remains consistent throughout the year, and it's very difficult to recruit our best without that pay. And so, the sales tax, I want to remind everyone, does not apply to groceries, gasoline, prescription medications, home or car sales, rent, or other exemptions as listed by state law. And it would be applied to thousands of tourists, people who live outside the community, as we move forward, and hopefully see some support with this effort. This tax passes, the commissioners have agreed to repeal the one percent property tax increase that was included in last year's assessment, which generated about seven hundred dollars per teacher. So, we certainly, I wanted to share this information with you. About fifty of our physicians across the district are classified employees, and we right now have a study that will conclude in February, because we do want to recommend a classified employee raise as well. And so, I'd like to leave this pencil here with some information on the back, so that when people approach you, you'll have the information before you and before the campaign really gets started. I wanted to bring this to your attention, and this will be-
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Before I call the next speaker, I do want to recognize, we have some guests this evening, our youth advisory councils here. If you'd stand up, please, and let us, thank you. We also have our college advisory board here as well. Would you stand up? Young people are doing a great job bringing good advice and recommendations to us through the Human Relations Commission, and we thank you for your work. Miriam McCarter, please.
I'm Miriam McCarter. I live at 5516 Novak Street. I'm here tonight speaking individually and as a representative of the Country Club Annex community with reference to the closing of the Novak Street Bridge. We want to express our gratitude to our councilperson, Dr. Burke, for her support in this ongoing issue. First, she was on the job when it came to addressing the initial concerns, such as getting emergency vehicles down there, or the school buses, or just how we would be able to operate on a day-to-day basis. Then, she was able to identify funding that would expedite the replacement of the bridge. I understand that our timeline was cut in half because of her efforts in finding money for that effort. And lastly, she supplied information that was made available to every resident of the community. That in itself made the journey a bit better, because it removed all of the rumors, and you know what some of those were, that including it won't be open again at all. So, now we know what the process is, what the timeline is, and we're here tonight to say thank you. Many of my neighbors are here. May they stand.
Absolutely. Novak area's neighbors.
And our association president, Coach Hayes, is with us as well.
Got the coach with his whistle tonight?
We also have a presentation that we hope that you will be able to convey to her. Again, thank you for all of you, for what we found to be leadership that we need in this issue.
Thank you, Ms. McCarter. Ms. Pender, do you want to? You've got something there, and you can leave it with the city manager, and we'll make sure that Councilmember gets that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pender. Samuel Gavron?
Yeah, Gavron. Excuse me. Pardon me, Samuel.
That's quite all right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Samuel Gavron, and I am the alternate chairman for the Homeless Caucus here in Winston-Salem. And I want to touch briefly on the subject of rent affordability. More specifically, I deal with members of the homeless community- More specifically, I deal with members of the homeless community, and their issues of concern are twofold. One, that of landlord engagement, and two, being able to enter into their apartments in a more timely manner. I'm sorry, as last month, I had a report that I was able to submit into the public record. I do not have a report with me at this present time. One of the problems that comes up most often are predatory landlords, more specifically landlords that abuse their authority for the purpose of extorting more rent than is allowed, or purposefully breaking leases, and this is a common problem in not only Winston-Salem, but in many areas of the state. I wish to elaborate further, but time prevents me from doing so. This is a very important issue about predatory landlords who mistreat and abuse their tenants in their care, and I have two business cards, and I look forward to working with the city council in addressing this issue at a later date. Thank you kindly.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? Can, Councilmember Bessie, can we ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Gavin, pardon me, sir, have you had a chance to speak with the staff in the Human Relations Department? There is a, I'm getting a nod, yes, so you're aware of the mediation program investigation efforts?
Well, I've heard that they are available on the final, the third or final Wednesday of the month, and so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to try to meet with them on the third Wednesday in February.
I think, actually, I'm getting a sort of head signals that you could get in to talk with someone ahead of that.
Oh, okay.
They'd be happy to talk with you.
Ms. Aubrey Harris, sitting right behind you there, if she can help you out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Otto Gaither is here, do you want to be heard on the, yes, Mr. Gaither?
Do this in the middle of the night, my hat's off to you. I am talking to, coming to you about the bridge on Novak as well.
Would you state your name and address, please?
I thought you just done that. Otto Gaither, at fifty-six, forty-one, Novak Street.
Thank you.
We have had some advantages, and you have done very well on a lot of that, but we were promised a certain time that you're gonna make an addendum, and things are gonna work a little faster, and it has not, and has not been reported to us. It was two years, and guess what, it's gonna be two years anyway. Now, I'm simply saying that there are things that have been said, people have added money and looked for money and got it for us, and we still don't have a bridge. The other part of that is, is that there are things that have been said, again, that I have also witnessed and sent people to you, or to the authorities that be, and they came up with complaints, and to me, this is a part of psychological or psychology one-on-one. The things that you say, that I need you to do what you say you're gonna do. I had people that come to me and say, well, I told them about a certain person, and they didn't do anything about a certain person, and then we on the national news. And I'm telling you, I'm holding you to your office to do what you say you're going to do, when you say you're gonna do it. I knew there's there times that there are things that come up that you can't do, I know that, I'm not stupid, but the reality is, I know you've given us political rhetoric a lot of times, and you don't have to. You can just be straight up, straight out, and we'll still say thank you, because, you know, you are our councilman, and we do like our councilmen. So you don't have to play games with us, okay? Have a good day, and please, and let me say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Pender, did you wanna address? All right, good. Thank you, Ms. Pender. Joanne Allen?
Joanne Allen, P.O. Box two-eighty-four, two-seven-one-oh-two, President of Action For Now Incorporated. I see, first of all, that we're heading into 2020 the same way we left 2019. Once again, we are back to where we originally started, and I'm not quite sure, but I don't know what city you all live in, or what city you all are talking about, when I hear you out here in the audience, but it is not the same Winston-Salem that the rest of us live in. I don't know if you all are just closed to the fact that it's just the same old, same old. I don't know if you're comfortable, because you've been sitting in these seats so long, with the exception of Mr. Lawson here, councilperson Lawson, or what. But sometimes what happens in life is that we get so comfortable in how we do things, that we no longer do it correctly, or even want to do it correctly. We just do it because we can, and that's what I see has happened here in Winston-Salem. Going back to the hydroponics, you know, I was in that committee meeting, as well as all the other meetings, and my first question is, how in the world do we set up something that's never, ever been tested? It started out with just hiring three individuals, now we've gone from a hundred thousand dollars to another five hundred thousand, and so where will it actually end? And I'm using that as an example on how we do business here in Winston-Salem. I don't know, maybe we just kind of lost sight of what civics one-on-two is? I don't know. Maybe we need to really concentrate that more in school, because apparently, right now, what has happened, and what has transpired over the decades, is the fact that we just have a group of people, I mean, look at your posture, look at how you relate back to the audience. There is no, yes, you know, we're on it, we're ready to do it, we're ready to take care of business. I'm just gonna say this very quickly, this is not a game. We go from homeless, poverty, to unemployment, all of that in a matter of moments, and then you all pick up, and you go home. That's what you do, you go home to your safe havens, while the rest of Winston-Salem is still out here suffering and looking for answers that you all have not been able to share or give. We're gonna do better, trust me, in 2020. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard during the public comment period?
Good evening. Good evening. Executive Director, Action For Now, P.O. Box one-seven-five-oh-six, two-seven-one-one-six. First, I would like to say Happy New Year to everybody. It is what it is, we're here, praise the Most High, that we are here to be able to discuss and dialogue. One thing I would like to bring forward, when we're talking about our oath, and I'd like to express that, because in our representation, it is not a game, you know, we are talking about, when we're talking about public law, we have to talk about public administration, which helps out that public policy, you know, so when we're talking about the administration and how law's supposed to go, this is where it kind of brings on a conflict of interest with the way some things have been administered throughout the city. So here we are in 2020, and you cannot expect those who are passionate about the city not to have a say-so. I mean, it's really, it's very obvious that people are kind of upset with the way the city has been administered, not just 2019, not just 2018, not just 2017, not just 2016. Before Mr. Raleigh was here, or any other new administration, there has been issues with the way the city has been administered, and policy has been carried out. So it will seem obvious that in our, as she, Ms. Allen stated, in our posture and in our relating back to the citizens, that we can come up with other solutions than what's the solution, or somebody is just saying something out of the side of their neck. Obviously, there is a problem. When we talk about the law of oppos, and we understand energy, and we believe in the Most High, then we have to understand that when we walk outside in these streets, and we see improvement in one area and degradation, and can't find money for another area, it constitutes a conflict of interest. It doesn't take a rocket science to figure that out, I don't have to yell and shout, and this is why I say the thing of it is, when we take an oath, if you look it up in the law dictionary, it tells you that that's an immediate sense to God first, then the people, so the people have to, it has to be a trust, that has to be administered on both sides, if we want to expect harmony in the city. Because what people are talking about now is because they are upset with, and of course, we can pull out instances where there's some growth, but we can't constantly look for the perception of we're growing, we're growing, we're growing, without also taking a look at what the problems are. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to be heard during public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, Anita Miles, four-ninety-four, Smithdale Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. First, I give God honor for allowing me to stand here tonight, because he's first in my life. Secondly, I'd like to thank the young people for being here tonight. I'd like to thank them, because I hope you learned something from this meeting tonight. Many of you attended the Martin Luther King ceremonies this weekend, thank you for being there. But I ask you humbly, if Dr. King was here tonight, what would he say to you? What would he say about the management of our city dollars, and are you being accountable for those dollars? I am thankful that you pulled the item involving that eight hundred thousand dollars in the East Ward. I ask you tonight, what could that eight hundred thousand dollars be used, other than a laundromat, and retail stores, and a strip mall? Could that eight hundred thousand dollars be used for affordable housing in Winston-Salem, in the East Ward, in the South Ward, in the Southwest Ward? Could that eight hundred thousand dollars be used for the three hundred and forty-five homeless children that our superintendent reported that we have in the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System? Three hundred and forty-five homeless children? Could that eight hundred thousand dollars be used to repair Crystal Towers? Could that eight hundred thousand dollars be used to stop the poverty in East Winston, in our East Ward? Children of Winston-Salem, remember these words tonight. Do you know how much eight hundred thousand dollars is? She says no. Do you know what eight hundred thousand dollars is, council members? Dee Dee Adams, councilwoman, I know you know. I challenge you, I give you food for thought. If Martin Luther King was standing here before you tonight, would he say it's okay to build a car wash with eight hundred thousand dollars? Would he say it's okay? Remember the spirit that you were elected on, because March third is coming up.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Seeing anyone, I'll declare the public comment period closed, and entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Clark had a comment.
I need thirty seconds. The largest project from the 2014 bond project in the West Ward is the widening of Meadowlark Road. It is progressing, but we've had some changes for the good, I will say, and I've asked Damon to give us a quick update. Thank you, sir.
You can?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council.
Good evening.
Councilmember Clark, city staff, along with staff from the Winston-Forsyth County School Board, have been working diligently on the comments that we were provided at the last public meeting, especially those surrounding the median in front of the school on Meadowlark Road. So we've developed several options jointly to help resolve that issue. City staff has directed our consultant to conduct some additional traffic studies to help confirm our assumptions. That data should be available shortly, probably within the next thirty days, at which point we'll be ready to present those options to both you and the public, and we're hopeful that the median can be eliminated and any potential U-turns. For those of you not familiar, those were the two prominent comments from the public, and we're doing our best to address those.
I just want everybody to know, we're making progress, we've, the school system has made some major changes in how they handle the traffic on their property, which has allowed us to, I think, streamline what we're doing with the widening, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Now I have a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Anybody want a second? I want to throw in the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Let us know, we're adjourned.